Yes.
Why is it so hard to sit on the inside? This is better than church.
Yeah, no.
We now call this regularly scheduled commission meeting to order on November 5th, 2012. Call at 7:30. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Susie Galia.
Here.
Commissioner Jason Baldwin.
Here.
Commissioner Nadia Sykes.
Here.
Commissioner Robert Renshler.
Here.
Commissioner Josh Breeden.
Here.
Commissioner Al Hernandez.
Here.
Each from city manager Bob Carter.
Here.
City Attorney Steven Tees.
Here.
Focus present, Madam Mayor, wait for us.
Thank you. To open our meeting, we will have an invocation followed by a pledge of allegiance and the national anthem. The prayer tonight will be given by Pastor Bill Heathold. Hi, is it in my hold? And our pledge of allegiance will then be given by Commissioner Meachler and our national anthem by Minette Wimbro.
Let us pray. Well, all the minds are on tomorrow what that election's gonna hold for this nation, for this people that live in this town. Where we actually watch over the election to make it fair and right. And they may run as smoothly as they can with all the different situations going on there. And the yellow we still have tonight dealing with Almagordo and what's going on here. We actually watch over commissioners tonight and the decisions they make and the people that come before this commission to have their voices heard. Because that really is the commission's responsibility to be listening to the people who elected to the offices. So Lord, we especially want to thank Ed and his wife for the minute of service. I answer that phone in all hours of night many times and he gets a little bit of time now to, they take some time for themselves. If you watch over him at this time, we'll seek to replace him, the word Hollywood about doing that, if you put that as well. Guide us all, Lord, as we seek to serve you. In that, serving you, we also serve one another. Thank you, praise you for your many blessings, especially for Almagordo and the work done here. That people will be blessed, continue to move forward as they seek to live their lives to you and in a way that would be helpful to their families and help them for the city of Almagordo to move forward into the future. Praise and thank you in Jesus' name. Mayor, please, just now, Lord, please, join me to pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, see, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? For the rivers we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rockets went clear. The bombs bursting in air gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will accept the motion to approve the agenda. I have a motion by Commissioner Hernandez and seconded by Commissioner Hernandez to approve the agenda. All of us in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Make it more just pass six to zero to approve the agenda. Our first presentation, although we create, we give the first one, then we'll move forward from there. Our Commissioner Ed Cole, Mayor Pro Tem Ed Cole has resigned, and so I would like to make a presentation of him and also his wife Sarah. I'll reset this timing.
Well, thank you for being here, Mayor Pro Tem Ed Cole. There's just so many good things I can say about you, and maybe I'm a little emotional right now because my body's a little weak from doing that Ironman competition, but...
Well, I'm your call.
I'm grateful for your many years of service, twelve and a half years of service, and in that time, maybe you've missed two meetings, and that is stellar attendance. What many people don't know about Ed Cole is he is an avid walker. In fact, this year, you took second place in the state municipal league annual meeting where we had a walking contest, and he won second place, beat out many people much younger than he. And Ed is a part of the Rails and Trails group, and he does a lot of hiking, and how many, it's been, how many years that you did the Bataan?
About eight or nine.
Eight or nine years you did the Bataan and has to perhaps train for it again this year. And every Monday, a lot of people don't know, but during the course of his three-mile walk, every Monday he'll take a lying garbage bag and pick up the trash that's left behind on each weekend. And I appreciate your service that goes unnoticed and unrecognized. And I know you're very active in your book group, and you love to read thick novels, and as a commissioner and Mayor Pro Tem, you've been a great advocate for our library and have been to almost every library event, and I'm very grateful for that. I was notified of that by Commissioner Sykes, who noticed your attendance at all the library events, and you really represent the commission well at those events. And service before self, you're the greatest example of that, and I know it took a lot of courage to resign, and I am so grateful for your courage, and it's been a great example to me. I did the Ironman competition this weekend, and I was in the middle of a large body of open water, and...
She told me about that.
Half a mile out, I almost waved the boat to come get me, because it wasn't what I expected it to be, and I thought of your courage and your pride, and it kept me going, and I finished that and continued, and I finished the whole thing, and so I look up to you, Ed, and I'm thankful for your courage and your pride and your service. You've been a great friend to the city of Almagordo, and I'm so grateful for you. I want to present to you on behalf of the city, on behalf of the commission, in recognition and appreciation of the service to the community as city commissioner from March 2000 to March 2010, and Mayor Pro Tem from March 2010 to November 2012, Almagordo City Commission, November 5th, 2012. So I feel that maybe we can get a picture like this or something. And then I'd also like to make a presentation to your lovely wife, Sarah. Sarah, I know that without you, service wouldn't be possible. You've truly served someone who has served our city for twelve and a half years, and a recognition and appreciation of sacrifices made during Ed's service to the city of Almagordo as Commissioner and Mayor Pro Tem from March 2000 to November 2012. On behalf of the city, Sarah.
I do have a ten, Miss Sarah, and we three does it pretend, and we both finish.
We both finish, we both finish.
Who's gonna pay for the dinner?
I'll pay for dinner.
Can I say a few words? I know you tell me I can't speak long, but I want to say a few words. You be seated, all of you. No one in here is my friend. I have a lot of friends over here through the ride. They're good, I want to share. I knew you'd show up. Why did you call me? I want to thank you, you ladies. Anytime I needed help, you were there. Anytime I didn't want help. Thank you. Now I can just make sure time to...
Mark your running.
I'm gonna walk up there and say hi to all my friends, even though of the other party. If you work for your party, I'm always for my party, and we'll both win. I followed this man since I was in the younger Republicans. He's still a Republican? I'm still a Republican. What does that mean? We're good men. I want to pray, talk to the mayor, my mayor girlfriend. You're doing an outstanding job. A man who can sit at a need and under all kinds of pressure and talk to you and say never get back. If that you know, when you get back, call me sometime, but I will come in. Thank you for everything. We've known each other for a long time, your brother. I appreciate you. You take care of that baby too, huh? If you don't, I'll get Sarah on too. I don't play golf, I can't say much about the game, I don't know much about you, but you make a good commissioner, you hang in there. Need any answers to any questions, if you got good men in the room, I'm here to talk to you, and a great staff. I did say I have a friends all over this community, and I did have a few back. Life has been good to me, and believing my gut, I believe in it strongly. Of course, my wife, she is the point behind me, all the time it's Sarah's. Come on, let's go home, mate.
Thank you for your decorum during this presentation. We will miss Mayor Pro Tem Ed Cole. For those of you that were here just in respect and reverence for Mayor Pro Tem Ed Cole, if you'd like to leave your office to do so at this time, and we'll move on to our second presentation. Presentation and proclamation for the Almagordo Idol winner. Before I do that, I want to acknowledge, we had many sponsors this year for Almagordo's pre-season. We had that Sunset Run, Almagordo Realty, they were our cash sponsors. We also had EY, Desert DJ, Let's Keep It With The Radio. And we had the city with Renee and Raul, and we had several other judges. And I'm grateful for the participation and the support that the community had given to all the contestants, and I'm grateful for the contestants that chose to share their talent at the city of Almagordo. And this time I'd like to recognize Miss Minette Wimbro as the winner for season three. Please come forward. We have a proclamation for you. It will actually be Minette Wimbro Day here in Almagordo on Wednesday, whereas the Almagordo Idol Season Three singing competition was held beginning with auditions on September 13th, 2012, at the Flicking Theatre in Almagordo, and whereas there were five elimination rounds held each week for five weeks, and whereas at the conclusion of the contest on Thursday, October 18th, Minette Wimbro was selected by the community as a third Almagordo Idol, and whereas this young woman will represent Almagordo and Otero County at many events and occasions, giving her time to promote Almagordo and Otero County, and whereas Miss Minette Wimbro has brought recognition and acclaim to herself and her family with this achievement, and she is a source of great pride to the city of Almagordo. Now therefore, I, Susie Galia, Mayor of the city of Almagordo, New Mexico, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, November 7th, 2012, as Almagordo Idol, Minette Wimbro Day.
Thank you so very much.
Our third presentation will be given by our city clerk Renee Cotton. And Renee, if you'd like to come forward and announce those who are all here, and let your present be clear.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. The Wine Festival Committee for the Pre-Local Rotary Club would like to say an official thing to the city community services staff and present this check for $1,664 to the recreation center to be used for kids who may not otherwise be able to make use of the services the city enjoys and the programs we offer. This donation is being given from a dollar per person who attended the Wine Festival, which was held on September 15th and 16th. And I believe there's a few rockarians in the audience, for those of you who are here, would you please stand up? Stand up as well. These are some rockarians that are in the room, myself and Matt as well. And a message from the committee is the city of Almagordo was instrumental in the success of this event, and we want to thank the city manager and the entire community services department for their assistance, the use of equipment, their tireless labor and cheerful and supportive attitude. No task was too large for this crew. They are always a pleasure to work with and truly an asset to the community. So I want to thank the city always for our support for the Wine Festival and allowing us to carry on with it.
Well, thank you Rotary Club for choosing to make that contribution of $1,664 to our programs here within the city. On behalf of the commission, we appreciate that service. Next, we will move into our other portion of our agenda, which is the reorganization of the city commission. Item number four, consider an act upon resolution number 2012-42, declaring a vacancy for District Six City Commissioner due to the resignation of Mayor Pro Tem Ed Cole. A roll vote will be required by our committee. Are there any questions regarding?
Do we need to make a motion on this?
Yes, we will need to make a motion as to whether or not we, how, what process we're going to adopt. Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Renshler and seconded by Commissioner Hernandez, that we approve resolution 2012-42, declaring a vacancy for District Six City Commissioner's seat. Are there any other items of discussion for item? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Al Hernandez?
Aye.
Nadia Sykes?
Aye.
Robert Renshler?
Aye.
Josh Breeden?
Aye.
Jason Baldwin?
Aye.
Susie Galia?
Aye. Thank you. Motion has passed six to zero to approve resolution 2012-42. Officially, there is now a vacancy in District Six. Next, we will move on to item number five. We are going to consider an act upon the reorganization of the city commission, and what we'll do, the process is, we will start with the office of mayor and we'll entertain motions, and if you'd like discussion, you can also add discussion prior to voting, and then also after we... There does not need to be a second to the nomination, so just a nomination, and we will do a roll call vote for each of the nominations, and for Mayor Pro Tem's position, it will be the same. A second is not required for a nomination, and we will do a roll call vote for each of the nominations as well. So I would entertain discussion or a motion for position mayor.
Do I make a motion to nominate you?
Or whoever you'd like to nominate.
I move that Susie Galia be nominated. With great respect that I nominate Susie Galia to serve as Mayor of Almagordo. In the past months, Susie Galia, I know you all, Hernandez, has demonstrated her willingness to take on difficult and controversial projects. She's shown her commitment, the dream of making Almagordo a better place for all of us. She consistently and tirelessly gets involved in the activities of this community, and she represents us citizens through her efforts as a woman model and a fine exemplary leader.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for mayor? Will the clerk please take the roll?
Al Hernandez?
Aye.
Nadia Sykes?
Aye.
Robert Renshler? Josh Breeden?
Aye.
Jason Baldwin?
Aye.
Susie Galia?
Aye. Thank you. Motion has passed six to zero. I will remain in position as mayor, thank you.
Following, we will accept nominations for the position of Mayor Pro Tem. Are there any nominations for the position of Mayor Pro Tem at this time?
I'll nominate Al Hernandez.
Okay. Are there any other persons in the commission that would like to make the nomination at this time? Are there any items of discussion? Will the clerk, will the clerk please call the roll so that we may, so that we may vote to elect Al Hernandez as our Mayor Pro Tem?
Al Hernandez?
Aye.
Nadia Sykes?
Aye.
Robert Renshler? Josh Breeden?
Aye.
Jason Baldwin?
No.
Sarah?
No.
Susie Galia?
Aye. Thank you. The motion has passed four to two. Commissioner Hernandez, you are now Mayor Pro Tem Hernandez, and if you'd like, would you please move your seat over here to the Mayor Pro Tem position?
We are next on to item number six, to consider an act upon this election process for filling the District Six seat for the city commissioner vacancy, and our city clerk, Renee Cannon, added this item to the agenda.
And our City Clerk, Renee Cotton, added this item to the agenda. Does anyone here have a question to ask? Mr. Hernandez?
I think we already used the same process we used whenever we appointed Sykes to the commission. Can't honestly don't remember exactly how it all went. I remember we had voted to do ballot, the secret ballot, and then we would have to do it different way. I guess like my motion, we did it the same, the same way we did it in the past.
Okay. That is highlighted in our agenda book, and as we begin the process on Tuesday, November 6th, the candidate packets will be available on Friday, December 18th of November. The deadline to submit declarations of candidacy and affidments of voter registration and letters of intent, and then Tuesday, November 20th, nominations of certified candidates. And then Tuesday, December 4th, there'll be interviews of the candidates alphabetically. And then following that, on Tuesday, December 18th, will be the final appointment. If you have any questions or would like to make an amendment to that process?
By the way, I'll sign the motion.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Bearden and a second by Commissioner Baldwin, that we took the process as established in the formal process of District Two seat, as stated in the agenda book. Are there any other items of discussion for this agenda item? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, nay. Thank you. Motion has passed six to zero. Now on to our consent agenda. Are there any matters on the consent agenda that any member of the commission would like to remove for further discussion at this time? Can I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda, items number seven, eight, nine, and ten.
Thank you. Do I have a second to the motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you. I have a motion by Mayor Person Hernandez and a second by Commissioner Bearden to approve the consent agenda, seven, eight, nine, and ten. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, nay. Thank you. Motion has passed six to zero to accept the consent agenda. The following is our unfinished business on item 11, to consider an act upon the recommended listing for Fund 109 Street Projects and funding to local roads, which we will present out.
Mayor, addition of right seats are equally heard. Actually, what we'll do the next two items, first one is considering Fund 109 Projects. This actually applies to all items. Just want to go over this really quickly. One of the main things that we do, looking at these projects, we'll make sure that we're using the right process, the right time, with this fat seal, fill-in, overlay, probably build the road. We always look at creating the ADA, applying corridors. We want to replace on subservice city utilities, preservation of good driving services. One of the other costs we have to consider is looking at all the projects, are the underground utilities. The commission up to this point has committed $800,000 per year to improve both water and sewer lines ahead of our projects. When we all get done replacing the street, the fourth history, just have to get out between the pipes of water. This slide, for all the items, this is all about Almagordo, the colored streets. All the blue, purple, and green since 2002. These are the streets that have been completed in various areas in Almagordo. For the, for this agenda, Fund 109, a lot of you on the commission, they think of this as the traditional 2004 projects. The grocery seeds tax was passed in 2004, a little quarter of one percent. It's dedicated for street preservation. In your packet, sorry, that's a lot of information. Very little, very little area there. What the commission had asked at, or prior to the workshop, in workshop, was a, a five year plan for the streets that we'd be looking at completing. And what you have here, excuse me, what you have here are the next five fiscal years we're proposing, this upcoming fiscal year, is that we complete 11th Street, White Sands to Ohio, One Vista Court. Those are the blue streets that are off of, off of 18th Streets. You'll see from 18th Street to 18th Streets, it's a horseshoe. The same with Lamar Circle, Cortilegra, Corti del Sol, and One Vista Court. If you go across on the spreadsheet, you'll see what length of roadway that we're working with, with what the square yardage comes out to be. And then, excuse me, then it's broken into paving costs. So you can see, for example, 11th Street, White Sands to Ohio, that's going to cost $160,000, a little over $160,000 to pay. We'll get $105,000, a little over $105,000 worth of paving improvements. And almost $160,000 in utility upgrades for a total cost of $425,000 for that, for that segment of the road. And that just carries down through the spreadsheet. So you can see fiscal year 14 and 15, we carry on with that, with program, with that union commission with us, because we'll be coming back to commission at budget time each year. So we'll continuously work on these numbers, so a street may be lumped down in the list, may be lumped up in the list. If the costs are coming in lower, when it brings back to commission, then we'll pull in next fiscal year, Corti del Rancho, or Chero, from hospital, one horseshoe street, street, 18th Street. So there is, there is going to be some movement. This isn't set, this is bound. The commission will, will have to, will have to approve this each year, each year of budget. Going on, well, it's the same app again. The streets that were in the first year that we're looking at, this is 18th Street, I think that was all over the street. And horseshoe streets are right there, so they're just up from Washington, just down the street. The next, the next spreadsheet that you have in the general board, please have this presentation to your laptop, too. What we're looking at here is actually the funding as it carries from fiscal year to fiscal year. The top portion of the spreadsheet shows our carryover balance. Then you'll see, excuse me, where the preparatory work, the ADA, drainage work comes in, followed by the paving. And we have the preservations, which is $150,000 we'd like to set aside each year for cracking slurry, sealing, or some other, some other process to preserve roads that we've already gone in and upgraded, or some of the new streets that have come in recently with subdivision or some of the other projects. As you go down to the next section of the worksheet, of the spreadsheet, you'll see 2008 cap, 2008 grocery seed stacks. We had two loans in the pledge, or this one's your pledge, you can send it, what, pay those two loans, the amount of grocery seed stacks we have coming in. We have some carryover from year to year, but we're proposing to use this, this money for, well, obviously, we have to repay the two loans. But with that carryover, we'd like to, we'd like to keep banking that money, because we do have some of these larger projects, or some projects that have gone us, sometimes unexpected, Ninth Street Bridge. If you inspected it, we didn't have anything set aside to replace that, that section. Luckily, during that time, our, it became available, but we really didn't have any money banked to take care of some of these issues. And then I show in that section, Dry Canyon, this is how we, this portion of fund for those types of projects. Bottom section of the spreadsheet looks at the utility, taking that $800,000 a year the commission has granted us each year to improve water and sewer, sewer lines. We will continue to carry over that balance. You'll see in some years, we're spending a little more than $800,000. Other years, we're spending less. That's because we need to take that carryover from year to year, add $800,000 to it, and that's how we're able to get as many of the streets done as we are in this. That's, that's it for this item. If you have any questions?
Mr. Bearden?
Brian, up here on 13th, 14th fiscal year, you've got One Vista, Lamar, Cortilegra. If we're going to do that area, I'd like to see Hubbard. I don't know how the rest of the commission feels, but I've been chewed on by those residents because that street's old.
Hubbard is the lowest street?
That's correct. Now, there's, Hubbard's the second one up. There's, if you're going up 18th, it'd be the second one on the left.
Okay, that's, that's the one. The reason that that, that one was, was pulled from, from this listing, and that's, that's actually a better example for the, for the monies from the 2008 balance. We have on the other horseshoe streets, we do have to address, obviously, the ADA, there's cleaner drainage issues, and on utility lines, on Hubbard, we have that end up one crossing.
The culvert there.
The culvert, yes. The arch hump, as you're, as you're going towards Dexter, Dexter, you may, you may scream, so.
Snow, yeah.
That is going to, that is going to be a, a much more expensive street, and doesn't fit in traditional 2004 streets. So I understand what, what you're saying. It is, it is on the, it is on, it is on the radar, did not have the time to fully assess that drainage area, because that's, that's going to be a major, that's going to be a major project. That, that could take the balance of one, one traditionally, where we, has been roughly $1.2 million a year coming in 2004 monies, and that one street loan would take, would take the, take that balance.
Okay, because I had several of the residents there, when we just did snow, dewy, which were last. The street names, appropriate, the ones going right now. They received notices, and they had some water meter stuff, this and that, so they thought their road was getting replaced, and it was just because they lived on corner lots, they lived on corner. So, but I'd like to see Hubbard on the list sometime in the near future.
I can put that into 2008, the, the carryover money.
Yes, to add to that, Susie Galia, I too have gotten complaints, specifically from those residents that do ride motorcycles on that street, that it's hazardous for those motorcycle riders, hot bullies under there. So if we can know when the schedule is time for that Hubbard drive, then we can relay that information back to the residents there.
Actually, and not just Hubbard, if you go with our, our, it's just, in particular, it's just turning the road. You cannot drive bicycle on that street anymore, as well as, you know, Kinley and Ridge Crest, those particular ones. And I'm curious about, actually, this year, can we, you know, years past, there's a lot of times we've seen roads show up, and just years goes on. This, this list is going to be solid?
Yeah, the commission approves, approves the listing, I guess. Now, there may be some shit, depending on, on funding and structure, possibly time, we may have to bounce the street a few down.
And it is, and what's important, I guess, is just not for a shit, this is a really, really bad street, you know? And Kinley is kind of a major pull there from 10th Street to scenic there.
The, the other thing that I tried to do, tried to do with this traditionally, with this money, you can see the shotgun event, there'd be a street in this district, a street in that district, with this, with rain blocking, trying to focus on an area, actually, make an area before we move on, so that we don't have the dewy and the snow, and you never see us again in the next five years. But I can, do have Kinley and Tendrins, so, I don't have, do not have.
It's probably the worst street condition for moving on. It's just, I mean, the only good parts of this street are where you all are going to replace utilities, actually.
We did it.
That's all we're doing.
And, and adding a street. Granted, that, that would be a couple of years down the road, be in that grouping, because we want to try and, and keep the, keep the streets in the same areas. We do get much, much better bids, more contrast, as we're going out, we don't have to hold the size and stage from. I can look at adding Pontiac into that portion, and we may have to bounce out of street or bounce it down the street, to keep that in that same grouping.
The commission understands that the limited street work, we see the fact that it costs so much for coffee, for, I think it's a mile's a million dollars, and about what it equates to. So perhaps in our preliminary budget workshop, we can find other sources or other funds to increase the dollar amount that we can attribute to roads. Our roads are important to those that ride their motorcycle or their car. They don't want flat tires or their shocks to go out. And so perhaps we can look at our general plan in our next preliminary theory, voting theory, and look at attributing more money to streets, because I believe that investing there, infrastructure will be an investment in economic development as well. Are there any items of discussion further by any other commissioners at this time? I would entertain a motion that we approve item number 11, to recommend, the recommended listing for Fund 109 Street Projects. Was there any of that bid next, new street projects? Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Bearden and a second by Commissioner Baldwin to approve the Fund 109 Street Project listed in the agenda book. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, nay. Thank you. Motion has passed six to zero to approve Fund 109 Street Projects. And we will follow that up with item 12, which we've already discussed, the Fund 118 Street Projects. Are there any further items of discussion for the Fund 118 Street Projects? I would entertain a motion to approve the Fund 118 Street Projects. If you have a motion by Commissioner Baldwin, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I'm a second by Mayor Person Hernandez. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, nay. Thank you. Motion has passed six to zero to approve Fund 118 Street Projects. We'll move forward on to item number 13, where we are to consider an act upon the final publication of ordinance number 1424, authorizing the sale of city-owned property located at 500 Panorama. And this will be a roll call vote. And our housing manager, Nancy Collins, will address that. Thank you.
Good evening, Nancy Collins, Housing Manager. We're here tonight, this is the second act, the final publication of ordinance 1424, offering the sale of the city-owned property on 500 Panorama. This is the first time on one of our housing authority properties where we've had multiple offers, and offers this evening, one for $28,000, one for $30,000, and one for $32,000. So I would defer to our city attorney's team with these on the process going forward at this point.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, because this is a negotiated sale, our city clerk declares the opportunity to bring in a sale, with interest in purchasing this property to come forward and make an offer, probably the highest offer price paid at the date. I believe the $30,000 is the last offer received, the $32,000 offer was received after the ordinance, which originally presented through the commission for the starting, since then amount is $30,000, and the other individuals in the audience who are in order that would come forward and state their, their rights. And the original, the leash of voting would have the opportunity to increase or, you know, continue, we'd continue that process until somebody had, had matched what they're willing to offer for the property. The commission can then decide whether or not, let's say, someone offers $34,000, whether it's in the best interest of the city to take the $34,000, or whether it's in the best interest of the city to accept this, or it's offered $30,000.
Thank you.
So, sorry, I'd also like to point out that some of the offers this evening are cash offers, and some will require financing. So that might be something to ask in this.
So what we do need to vote on is the final and second publication of the ordinance tonight. We don't need to discuss the offers, is that correct?
Madam Mayor, Commissioner, on the voting Madam Mayor, Commissioner, on the voting of the second reading ordinance publication would occur after we agreed to the, to the final price. And we've submitted the, the price, the thirty thousand dollar price. We've submitted to whatever you agree to accept and then successful there, and then the ordinance, and we publish before it's changed.
There are a few members of the commission that would like to ask questions at this time about the offers.
Are the people that made the offers here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all for you.
No, one person has decided that he does not want to increase his offer. So, we have two people here. And this is Cindy Boylan, she is from exit Realty, and she can also explain the people that made offers through her office.
Because the question I'd be happy to see is, if Ms. Gonzalez would like to raise her bid, or Mr. Gonzalez or Ms. Boylan, see who wants the bid highest.
Right, right. So, I would ask that the individuals that submitted bids on the house come forward at this point. And I'd also like to introduce Cindy Boylan, from exit Realty. She, we contracted with her to list the properties, and she can introduce each of the offers for us and then we can evaluate with that.
Thank you.
Cindy Boylan, exit Realty.
Welcome.
It's my understanding that since Alicia Lloyd put the offer in part publication, and the second offer that she has to make at this point, to speak up. Okay, so you guys, on the permission, you know, about your offer.
Mayor, you may have my word.
Oh, you say your name for the record.
My name is Albert Collin.
Me too.
We may have my word, third, as well, in the house. And I would like to put this to the house because my in-laws used to be a resident of Albert Collin, moved to San Diego about eight years ago. And he will come back here to, with his return home, so that's why we're trying to put this home. I'll be required to pay back the offer on that house, although I don't feel that would come out.
What we'll do is, if anybody wants to make a higher offer than thirty-two thousand, I think that that person needs to come forward at this point.
And if I can explain this real quick, your offer was for thirty-two, so with financing, Ms. Lloyd's offer was for thirty thousand for cash. They're both taking their properties as is. Alicia's offer has the closing cost to the city outside the owner's title policy.
Well, that's the case, I'm gonna make up thirty-four thousand.
And on the, on our policies, it's, the only thing he's got on there is the recording fee for the sale.
Commissioner Rensler?
I'm curious, you said the word financing, was the city financing, or?
No, it'd be they financing. They have, they've already been, they've been financing.
And what would the closing cost for the city be for the offer of thirty-four thousand?
Five percent commission, plus gross receipts tax, and probably about fifty dollars in recording fees.
Cindy, oh, there's, the second offer, they were not requesting owner's title policy?
Um, they put it on their side.
Okay.
The buyer said that they would pay for that. The only thing that the buyers are asking.
Please use the microphone so we can get on the record. Thank you.
The only thing that the sellers, or the buyers are asking on their offer is for the seller to pay the recording fee, which is probably around fifty dollars.
There are questions at this time about the cost for financing, the closing, or bids?
So, it's my understanding that we have a cash offer of thirty thousand and an offer from, you folks, for thirty-four now?
And that's thirty-four thousand minus seventeen hundred dollars and commission fee, is that correct?
Correct.
So, we're down to thirty-two, three, is that fine? Plus closing?
I'm sorry, I apologize.
We're looking at, at what you said, five percent commission. Thirty-four thousand is seventeen hundred dollars, so the net gain to the city at that point in time is thirty-two, three. And what other, did we pay the closing cost?
You're gonna have, on the commission, you're gonna have gross receipts tax, which is seven point sixty-five percent.
Sure, well, that's an amount of eighty hundred dollars or something like that.
Right, plus fifty thousand for recording.
And we're down about thirty-two thousand. And will that be, will that fee be there for, no matter who we sell it to, or is it just this one particular?
What fee?
The five percent.
Yes. It's gonna be up to sales price regardless of who brings an offer.
Okay.
Yeah. So, whatever sales price we end up deciding on, then it's gonna be five percent of that.
Okay, so, in other words, we have a cash offer, five percent still stands?
Correct, yes. If you, if you do recall, when we contracted with Cindy, the commission did vote for five percent commission for her, so that was.
We chose a reduced commission, yes.
There are also thirty?
Okay, ma'am.
My name is Alicia Lloyd, and our offer was thirty. It's purely an investment on my part, but also with the cash offer, we don't have to have anything to do about appraisal or home inspection, that makes sense. So, there's, there's no way this is not gonna go through. In five days, we'll decide a day, we're, we're ready for it.
Are there any questions from the commission this time? I entertain a motion to approve an offer.
It's a really weird process for us. Thank you all for your interest.
We can take calling calls.
I'd like to know a quick question. What's the condition of this house? I haven't had a chance to look.
The condition is actually really poor. If you do, if you recall, this was one of the, you know, lease-to-own properties, the individuals up and left. And they removed flooring, they removed the wall. The paint interior is terrible. I actually have some pictures here because this is a home you have not seen pictures of. If you'd like me to pass them around so you can look at the condition, I can do that. It's, it's, it's not in good condition. I feel that thirty thousand is an appropriate appraisal price for this home. It's not that we were, the appraisal's under what the condition is by any means, so.
Commissioner Rensler?
Thank you. Can I ask you which offer's in best interest of the city?
Well, the city, I mean, the money, we have to consider that the money is gonna go back to the housing authority. And we're gonna use it for homeownership in the future. I'm working on that right now. We wanna do some sort of mixed financing, build new. But the money is going to stay at the housing authority's for affordable housing.
On a great basis, what's in the best interest of the government?
The more money, the better, because that means we have more money for residents, for our citizens, to ensure low-income housing.
So, you're suggesting we take the thirty-four thousand offer and then we're on?
That's what I'm suggesting.
Commissioner Rarid?
Yes, a question for Cindy. When they go in there, if census is going to be financed above the higher, are they gonna do a home inspection? And is the city gonna be liable to fix or repair some of the damage? Or is it an as-is, sales?
I'd like to tell you a as-is. Sometimes it's just hard to know with the banks. Their qualified to bank thirty-four. I mean, my experience is that sometimes they're asses, sometimes they're lenders, it's their money.
I don't wanna see us accept their offers and then have them come back in forty-five days and have the bank say, well, you need to fix this, you need to fix this.
And that's, that's possible.
You know what I mean? The other offer, he adds a little bit lower, but it's a cash offer. And it's not gonna be that red tape.
And I did talk to the bank, I let them know the condition of the property, I told them it was as-is. And they know that. But with the loan, they'll still have to get an appraisal. And although we do have a current appraisal of thirty thousand, it's still going to be, you know, market just changes every time we turn around. It's changing a little bit, it's always.
So, is there a potential that there's, when they get the appraisal from the bank, that their financing can fall through for the, for the house?
I don't think their financing necessarily can fall through. There may be some changes, or, for example, if, and this may be a question for you guys to ask down after this, is that, if the appraisal comes back and requires certain repairs, say they require three thousand dollars for the repairs, the buyer has to be willing to either come up with that money or borrow additional model three, thirty-seven thousand dollars to get those repairs done. Because we've already informed them in test, is they're not doing any repairs. So, that, that would be the risk. If they're willing to do that, then. They do, they have what they call five oh three K rehabilitation rooms. And basically, what happens is an appraiser comes in, which is what I believe Melody talked to the bank about. They come in and say, okay, this is what needs to be done to make the house habitable. If, they will have to get a contractor in there, it has to be a licensed contractor to give them, say it's five thousand dollars. Then they will borrow that money with them, their loan, and the bank structures it on a draw, like a construction loan, to get those repairs done. And they, and they release the repair funds. That way, the bank has control over making sure repairs get done and they're protected then.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that if we accept the higher offer, that we don't lose out on the other offers, so.
Well, those are very valid points. I mean, if, you know, if this comes back and it doesn't work out and they are looking for repairs, I am going to tell you one hundred percent, we will not repair any, make in that home. So, that is a very valid concern.
And you might, I mean, you might, you might want to use the microphone.
I mean, if.
I'll raise my hand.
You say your name for the record.
My name is Alicia Lloyd, and I'll raise my hand for the thirty-two.
Are there any other questions, any queries, or any questions at this time?
Madam Mayor, I'd move that we approve and accept the thirty-two thousand dollar cash offer at this time.
I'll second that. Thank you. I have a motion by Mayor Posten Hernandez that we approve the thirty-two thousand cash offer, and a second by Commissioner Sykes. Are there any other items of discussion on the side of prior to voting? This will require a road call vote. Will the clerk please call a roll to approve? And also, we need a motion to, for the final publication of ordinance number one four two four, authorizing the sale of the city-owned property at five hundred Panorama.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
That motion would be, need to be to amend, amend the final publication of that ordinance.
Okay.
To state the thirty-two thousand dollar cash offer from Alicia Lloyd.
Remand your motion.
Madam Mayor, I would amend my motion to.
Excuse me, we, we added an increase in the offer to thirty-five thousand.
We have a motion and a second first.
Yes, we need a motion and a second, that's that to be amended. Your motion is to amend the publications number one four two four to approve the purchase price of thirty-two thousand dollar cash offer?
Yes, ma'am, and the final publication.
And our, Commissioner Sykes, is that your second?
That's my second.
Okay. And would any other member of the commission like to discuss the additional offer of thirty-five thousand dollars at this time?
Discuss or make motion?
Would you like to make, discuss or make a motion?
I'd make a motion if we put that out.
Okay. I have a motion that we amend the ordinance one four two four to approve. Yes?
You would have to vote on that first motion?
Yeah.
Before, before you make an additional motion to vote on.
Okay. We will go ahead and vote first. And to approve ordinance one four two four, amended for the offer of thirty-two thousand dollar cash at five hundred Panorama for its final publication, the clerk please call a roll.
Alan Hernandez?
Aye.
Nadia Sykes?
Aye.
Robert Rensler?
No.
Josh Riddick?
Aye.
Jason Baldwin?
No.
Susie Galia?
No.
We have a tie vote of three-three. The motion has not passed. Since the motion has not passed, we will consider this second motion by Commissioner Baldwin to amend ordinance one four two four and the amended amount of thirty-five thousand dollars finance offer. Is there a second to Commissioner Baldwin's motion?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Rensler. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Alan Hernandez?
No.
Nadia Sykes?
No.
Robert Rensler?
Aye.
Josh Riddick?
Aye.
Jason Baldwin?
Aye.
Susie Galia?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion has passed in a four to two vote to approve the amended offer of thirty-five thousand dollars finance and the ordinance final publication of one four two four of the housing authority's sale of the city at five hundred Panorama. Would you like to add more, please, Paul?
Thank you very much this evening. One additional thing, if we have a moment. Cindy has not had any offers, has not had anyone look at any of the remaining homes that are on the market. And so, we have been talking about reducing the price of the homes. As you know, there's probably gonna be some issues with that because they're gonna be below appraised value. If they sell below appraised value, then we'll have to give a reason to state why we sold the homes for below appraised value. We seem to give you some more details about that, but if we have a moment for Cindy, she can talk about kind of some market trends and, you know, where we should go with the other homes.
I mean, please bring the presentation to the commission at this time regarding those homes that are remaining to be sold.
We have on the market a little over sixty days. The one on Panorama is the only one that's had any activity, any offers, any showing. The, the other six houses, and we just haven't got, we've got maybe two or three phone calls, but I'd like to know, I need our lockbox keys to track who goes in and out. We haven't had.
Cindy, Cindy, I'm sorry, do we need anything else from the board here at all?
I don't believe so. Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Every time.
Thank you.
I, I think.
This is on the agenda of proper discussion. What's that?
Can we take this back, please, to the chief?
It's just something to consider. We're not asking, there was no action considered.
Okay, well, I appreciate the discussion. Would you please submit, which is email, and this to the next amendment for a presentation? Okay, thank you, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies.
Commissioner Rensler? You will move forward to our new business, the item number fourteen, discussion of possible action on the parade route for the Christmas lights parade. Commissioner Rarid requested this item be added. Commissioner Rarid, would you like to discuss with the tire?
I guess I would. The reason I put this on here is, the other day, I seen one of our emails, parade permits, and a Christian parade. And stated the route coming down ten street and going down Delaware to the, to the north, if I'm not mistaken. So, I called Bob and asked him about it, and nobody could give me a logical reason why the parade all of a sudden changed the route. You know, there was no, and I think it changed sometime during, when the former city manager Roel was here. And I don't understand why we changed it. You know, it's always gone down ten street and turned south onto New York and dispersed, you know, A and I Street, or around there. And the Downtown Merchants Association likes it because they decorate. I've had several of them call me and ask me about, you know, why the parade doesn't, and I can't give a logical answer why we changed the route.
Commissioner Rensler?
I would say that it don't make sense for it to go to downtown.
I kinda think so too. And I just felt if we brought it with the commission, and the commission just decided, hey, this is the route we're gonna take, then this happened.
Mr. Esprit Two, would you like to address the question regarding this item?
My, Esprit Two, I'm Lord, I'm in Congress. Our application, which had a copy of our original permit, Mr. Commissioner, is to go to New York, wasn't Delaware.
Well, the parade permit stated that it was gonna go down Delaware.
That's correct.
That's correct.
We, we, we host the, the annual parade every year, and, and we go to New York, and a lot of businesses are open, and recently did that because of that. It's been that way for a long time here. So Delaware is not what we requested, not the request on the application, it was the annual gathering. It was changed by DPS.
So who's DPS?
That's what we got. If I may, I can show you that.
I believe it, I believe it.
Thank you for bringing that document.
You know, when I was, when I was younger and a kid, I don't, you know, Al was saying that it was even further, but when I was a kid, it started at college, and they lined them up going down college, cut down 10th Street all the way to New York, and then went to the south. You know, Al was saying that when he was younger, that they started up at high school and came down. So, you know, I don't know why we changed it even at Oregon, you know, unless the parade just got smaller.
It's gotten, actually, it's gotten bigger, so we changed on Oregon to go to Indian Wells because it's so large.
So much longer.
Yeah, so that way we, we don't create a real traffic issue.
I don't know if we need a motion, or if we can just direct staff to, to change the route more or less. Assistant City Manager shaking his head, looking glad to do that. Okay, I'd, I'd like to see it go down New York.
The direction to the staff is to have the parade go down through New York route.
Down New York, just like it always has. So as long as the rest of the commission is okay with that.
Are there any members opposed? I'm sorry, what was that?
To follow the original request.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Baldwin has stated that it would best to follow the original request as the Timber Commerce requested. Are there any other items of discussion? No? The direction to the city staff is to follow the original request as sent in by the Timber Commerce. And our next item will be item number 15, discussion possible action related to the duties for preparation of cemetery deeds. Commissioner Rarden requested this item. Commissioner Rarden, would you like to sign?
A little background on this one, you know, about a year ago, here in a few days, a year ago, my dad passed away, and I had to deal with cemetery over there to get him a plot. And I realized we're back in the 1950s on how we do that over there. You know, I went over there and asked the guy about how to, to buy a, there's kind of two parts to this. There's, you know, I asked how to, how to buy a cemetery plot, and he gets out this whole ledger book, starts looking through there, and says, hey, we got this one available. So he picks up the telephone, he calls this new home, and says, do you have this one available? And they tell him yes, so he hangs up, calls the government, says, do you have this one available in your book? So we've got three different ledgers amongst the cemetery and all the new homes, and it would make sense to me to have that computerized, that three entities all have access to it to kind of keep things, you know, I mean, it seems like we need to kind of get into the computer age with the cemetery over there. And that was part of the reason. And then with the deeds, you know, when Dad died in November, I didn't get a deed until, I think, February, March of this year, because we do them out of our rec center for some reason. And I really feel that we should move from the rec center over to the clerk's office where the record keeping is supposed to be done. And I'd say, I just, you know, maybe it didn't matter a whole lot, but if you've got somebody who's really grieving, go through that process, that they got a way to get it from the rec center, and then comes the clerk's office and sign, and the mayor's, it seemed like a very cumbersome process. So I just wanted to bring it to the commission, that we look at it and maybe change the way we do it.
I was, I happened to be in Renee Canton's office today. Our city clerk had programmed something to talk about the software. Ms. Canton, would you, let the commission know about the software and how it would work if the process were moved into the clerk's office?
Madam Mayor, Commissioner's, I haven't had a chance to go over and review what they're using or anything to that effect, but it's my understanding that there's, there's a very archaic process that's being used at this point. I'm not familiar with computer systems, it's looking, but I'd be willing to look into that. As far as the process, that, that, it's, it takes quite a long time, and, you know, initially I was, I was fighting wanting something else to do in my office, but once I learned the process, that I don't, I believe that our office will be able to streamline it for this reason. At this point, that as, as Commissioner Rarden said, the cemetery deeds are being prepared for recreation center. They then send the, the person who, first of all, is dealing with the loss, to the cashiers here at City's, City Hall, take it back to the rec center, send it over to me in an inter-office departmental mail envelope for the mayor's sign, and I, and myself to sign, and we notarize it, and then we send it back to the rec center for the person to pick up the deed. So, in order to really streamline the process, if we prepared it in our own office, we could take it right to the cashier, put it in the mayor's box, give it back to the person, and make it quite a lot quicker. And, and then at that point, I'd like to really look at the software and how that might work.
Thank you. City Mayor, would you like to add something?
Yes. Our problem is, is they haven't updated the Sexton's report in all those three locations. We just need to get our, our cemetery supervisor to go to the computer. We have the software, we think, I talked to Mark today, and it looks like the computer software is there, we just haven't been using it. And I think with Renee's help, we can get this done pretty simply, and, and Matt is very aware of what's going on out there, and so we will try to get those things updated for you, and then this shouldn't be a real big issue to take care of.
Do you think most of that, or just the direction of the staff to get it handled?
I, I would like to, to leave it with staff to bring back to you, because if, if we did have to buy more software, then we can do that. But right now, you'll give us the opportunity to, to look at it, make some recommendations. I don't think it's going to be that much of a problem if it did come back and the issue was resolved.
Link is that we brought back to the commission. Is that to be on the November 20th agenda?
I would say the first meeting in December.
First meeting in December. The direction to our city staff by the commission is, is to bring the, this item back to the commission on the first agenda in December, so that we might look at a more streamlined process for the cemetery deeds, and also look at what needs to be done, if anything, to update our software. Are there any other items of discussion for this item? We will move forward on to item number 16. This is the appointment of a city representative who serves on the consortium for high-tech innovations in water and wastewater, also known as Chilawa. And I received this note in September, but it was in a stack of many letters, and I opened it too late to realize that there was a meeting held on October 25th, where we have not had a city representative for, since 2004, and the city was one of the founding members of this organization. So at this time, we need to appoint a member of the commission, and also I'd like to have a member of the city staff involved in this board as well. City Mayor, is there a member of the staff that you would recommend to be appointed to this board?
One of two, either Matt or Brian.
Do they, do they get two?
I'm sorry. I say one of the two, and that would leave that up to, to their discretion, I think, either Brian or Matt. One.
If one of us can't make it, the other one will, will buddy system those two.
Okay. So we'll have two parts time to appoint you through. Okay. Are, are there any members of the commission that would be interested in serving on this board? That can make these meetings in El Paso. I don't know how often they meet yet. I don't know if it's annually or quarterly. If there are no members of the commission that would be interested in serving this board, I would like to serve on this board, and will make the time to attend these meetings. I understand we have the research facility here off of Del Road, and much has to do with that facility. In fact, they would like to help us achieve a desanization plan in the future, and so I would be very interested in serving on that board on behalf of the commission and the city, if working with Mr. McHale or Mr. Seaver. Are there any other items of discussion for this board? I will appoint myself to the board, and hopefully have our part-time city staff, serving part-time as Matt or Brian, whoever can go ahead at the time of the meeting. For our boards and committees, there are multiple boards and committees. First, we have our airport advisory board, where we have two vacancies. I would like to appoint Mr. Jeff Rayman. If he is appointed, as he is appointed, this will be his third term, and our bylaws, there are not to be more than two consecutive terms. However, if it is in the best interest of the board for this continuity and for the knowledge that he be appointed, the board would like to have Mr. Rayman reappointed. So I will appoint Mr. Rayman for his third term. He's a pilot and resides in this county. And my other appointee to the airport advisory board will be Christina Wapler. This is her first term. She is a member of the US Forest Service, and she works in the facility that's the story bomber base there, and it would be great to have her represent that office at our airport advisory board meetings. Our airport zoning board has two vacancies, there are no nominations. The Alamoor Disability Council has five vacancies and no nominations. The Community Development Advisory Committee has two vacancies and no nominations. The parks and recreation has one vacancy. I will be reappointing Lena Wiley, and this will be her second term. And our final boarding committee tonight is our senior volunteer programs advisory council. And there are three vacancies, which is one nomination, and I will be appointing Mr. James Rogers, and this will be his first term. Are there any members of the commission that would have any items of discussion for these nominations and appointments? No? Okay. We will move on to further items for our agenda. And if there are any ethical communications by any members of the audience here tonight, please feel free to discuss anything with the commission at this time. Could you come forward, please, speak your name for the record?
How you doing? My name is Alexander H. Wilson. I'm a citizen of this city. My, my thing that I have is that there were some things that I had noticed upon scenic, which I thought was like really stupid, and so I wanted to bring it up to the, the attention. So when you spend money next time, you don't spend it so frivolously, okay? When you go down scenic, there's two signs that address one street. Have you noticed that? There's two signs that address one street.
Which one street would this be?
On scenic, it's on scenic. Each street you go by, there's two signs. I don't know the name of all the, the streets up there, but it says like, I say, ruin them. And then you see a fixer. Another sign that says, ruin them, and it's the street. I mean, you've got to see it if you live on scenic, kind of, you know? Well, it's there, and I thought it was really a waste of money. I mean, how can you have two signs less than about 13 feet apart that address the same street?
What was part scenic, because it's not scenic?
You go up first street, and you're going down, and you're going down.
Between first and 10th?
And then you make a, a left, which is going down toward the hospital or the...
Between first and 10th, or...
Yes, it is, it's, yeah. You notice that, that there's a, two signs here, and it addressed one street, and I couldn't, I couldn't get past that, because I said, that is so, I don't know, I, I, I just couldn't get it. And so I'm saying like, that's really a waste of money.
We understand what you're talking about. There's a large sign that acknowledges the street before a driver comes upon it.
Yeah, and I, I didn't get the word, where do you spend that kind of money? I mean, you know, I can get that one. And the other one is that I had a problem with, with 10th Street and 54. And that's when we get a flood, we get, we get some, a lot of rain, and, and that street still floods. And I don't get it. And I'm saying, I've seen them work on it, and it's done some real work on that. But still, when we get some real rain, and it's not like we did it all the time, you know, this place comes and floods, you know? But it's just the point is, it's still, it floods. And I'm saying, God, you know, I didn't hear long enough to see that. Over and over, I'm saying, nobody made a move to say, well, like, hey, there has to be a better way to do that. And that, that, I just have to bring that up, because those are the things that stick me every time that we get a real flood in through here, 10th Street is flooded, and I'm saying, come on. That's all I wanted to address you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Before you leave tonight, you can leave your, your email and your phone number with our city clerk, then we can, we can get back with you the information we find out about the flooding on the 10th and 54th, and how that will be managed. And thank you very much for addressing the commission about the street sign on scenic. We'll look into that.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Seaver, if you would, if you address the commission, let us know, the street signs roughly, approximately, how much are street signs, like the large ones, however kind of the street? Oh, you don't, I know you don't know. Off your ass. It's just for one fine, because...
That, those were the, the 144.
144?
All the street name signs in Alamoor, all, all traffic control signs, those had to be, had to be upgraded to new standards. I believe we have until 2016 for red cell signs in Alamoor, and the majority of those have been completed. The signs on the scenic, as you say, on, on actually New 1st Street, when we type it up, have a two signs for each street. You have the actual sign that's on the street itself, the smaller sign that's up on the, on the stop sign, the crossbar. You have the larger signs that are in the median, so as you're, as you're going north or south on, on scenic, or east or west on 1st Street, you're made aware that you're coming up on, you're driving on scenic, that you're coming up on 15th Street, prior to getting that intersection. So those are the larger signs of scenic in the area. The actual custom of those, I do not remember those from purchase, two years ago, two and a half years ago. Off the top of my head, I just cannot remember.
And there was purchasing group, well, what you remember about scenic and 1st Street and Indian Wells as well, so you set pyramids, block pyramids there, they had the announcement before you hit town blockway or whatever it is, and they'll draw, take it down. And what happened is a lot of particular or older residents were coming, at least the ones in my district, would come to me, and I know that the signs the commission had come, the other commission was saying, oh, our signs bad. And the commission looked very hard, but then some sort of fancy sign, which, I don't know, I was not favorable, not that, that person. So we put the signs, we already offered them two pieces of metal, and so we have an announcement sign, whatever you call it, a brief sign, before you get to the street. So people kind of know where they're at, and they're, so on, so that's, you can blame me for part of that, I'll accept that responsibility. But I wanted to back up, because I had citizens that say, you know, at night, we don't know where we're at, and I was like, well, I was not that big, but okay, thank you, I'll, I'll believe it, so that's what we did.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the audience that would like to address the question at this time? See, we will move forward on to our city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of items. We're trying to update our webpage, and we have now put Megan in charge of the webpage. We'll be doing a little bit more once I can get with Mark Graham, but we will have, this is, this is kind of our webpage right now. We'll look at more of a sophisticated, updated type webpage when we start working, that we can actually get good information, updated information. So we're going to be doing more of the webpage to try and get information out of our community. Second thing is, we have a budget workshop this week in Albuquerque, and we'll be sending staff to, on the eighth and ninth, Steve and, and some of just the employees will be going. And as soon as they get back with their packets, then we'll start the process of starting to look, put together our budget, where we can have our budget workshops early in the spring, and have that thing together, where we can get that kind of taken care of. We're in the final stages of our financial director process, and should be a week or so, we'll have that person take care of that. We've had a lot of complaints with the speed limit on white stands where they're putting in the big ditch, to take your one. That's Beagle, and it goes way up to, toward the bridge, and it starts at 25 and goes to 15. That's not the city's, we can't make that call, unless the State Highway Department Bureau of Information. So we're trying to work with them to bring in there a little bit, rather than just to flashlights, and try to help the public understand that there's... light slides and try to help the public understand that there's a speed limit there and, and try to, to be user friendly because that is a long ways for them to be in that, that work zone and we're not even at work zone. So we're working on that. Had some comments from some of the commissioners that have called about some issues out of the Housing Authority with water problem where the, the residents there can water their backyards. What had happened when they started putting up the new, um, backyard fences, oh, yeah, we can't fence in, the water meters, they have to be on the outside of the fence while they're right where the, the spigot was. So they're going to go in and manually remove the, the spigots running down and around the fence where they're taking it to, and it will be on the inside of the location for those unless there's a gate in the backyard and you need to go right there and turn them on for the hose underneath the, uh, fence. I think that will, uh, work out real well for the residents there. So thank you for the issue today.
Thank you. Um, are there any remarks or inquiries by any of the commissioners? Commissioner Verden?
Uh, so an update on culverts over there on Oasis Trailer Court.
Um, Mayor, Commissioner, a couple of weeks ago, the judge issued a scheduling order, um, on a matter scheduled to go to trial, um, October 6th, June 13th.
Uh, is there, this, I don't know about you guys, but this has been a year already since the commission directed staff to remove the culverts and now we're looking at an additional year before we ever can go to court. It does, I don't know how y'all feel, but that seems like a very excessive length of time to go pull some culverts out. And, I mean, if it takes the court this long to tell us we can take them out, how long's it going to take them to tell us we got to put them back in and we just will take them out? It's, you know what I mean?
Now, Mayor, Commissioner, the issue is not how long it's going to take them, um, to order you to put them back in, it's at what price that the, they, they're determined to be involved or not, um, having, if you don't have the right to take them off.
It's our ditch. We don't.
It's his culverts and you give permission to install those culverts in the ditch.
We can't just revoke the permission.
Unfortunately not. The sufficient documentation wasn't done at the time that the permission was granted. It would give us that right.
Okay, we can't, there's no law for health, safety and welfare where there's 50 or 60 residents that gets flooded.
Arguably it's a property right and you have to give process, that's actually process on, where you require to go to court and get a court order to allow you to remove that.
I never understood how we have to have a court order to take something off of our property. It just doesn't make sense to me.
It's actually not our property. We don't have an easement right. The property owner that we're, that we have in court has an underlying fee.
Okay. I, I just, I, I would like staff to research how we can expedite that because we're already into it a little over a year now and we're looking at an additional year before we can do anything. I mean, it's, it just seemed going off of, it's been going off for 10, 12 years, 10, 20 years now. And, uh, you know what I mean? We can't take any action or anything on it tonight other than direction of staff, but it just seems absurd that we got to wait that long in order to get those culverts taken out.
Mr. Rader?
Uh, Mayor, Leo, uh, Commissioner Rader, I went out there this afternoon and got with Jim and we rolled that whole area again and looked at that situation. My concern is, is I looked at that, that, those culverts being there, even if we took them out with the velocity of that water coming down through there, I'm not sure that we would at that next intersection create some kind of a dangerous situation because the water's got to go right over that next area.
Will you be able to address that?
Well, uh, back up the ditch a long ways, um, I'm not sure that some diversion shouldn't maybe be looked at up there because if we take those culverts out, the velocity of that water going through there, uh, I think the engineers told you all before that that would take care of that water, there wouldn't be a problem. And now we've got a big problem. So I, I would like to, to do some hydrology on that, have our engineer do some hydrology and make sure, if those were taken out, then, and we have the, the rain that is normal, what are we looking at downstream to keep us from getting into more trouble? And, and I agree with you. It, it seems crazy, um, but, um, I would like to really look at that ditch and see if we pull those out. Is there something else we can do? I did look at properties, there is a way to get into that property from another direction. There's only one, uh, little home in that park back there right now. Uh, and so, um, there is some things that, but the court, if we knew this was only going to take about a half day, we'd probably get on the docket real soon. But because they predicted this court, if this, this case could take from three to five days, they have to put it on a docket that they can dedicate that much time to and that's the very reason that we're looking down the road a year because it's going to take that long to get that much time on the docket.
And we authorized money and the 25th, 24th, 25th street's already been, that culvert's already been redone. They just ripped it out, redid it and it's supposedly designed in order to support the amount of flow of water through there. The next one was going to be the one canal. And the ultimate fix was to go up at the, the scenic in Florida and do something up there to divert it before it gets there.
It's a better way of, uh, than on, uh.
Yeah, and make it go to the west like it always did. And somehow or other it got changed and it goes to the south. It just, you know, the, the property damage that water causes to those people, whatever it was, is.
Well, they, they even put metal up and they put concrete barriers up and, Brian, are we going to do something above that or what are we doing?
Mayor, Mr. Commissioner, uh, on that, on that ditch, there was all the hydrology actually has been completed. That was done a number of years ago and it got, wait for your time. I will head, at least we came in, gave us the recommendations for that ditch, the 24th Street crossing that was done last fiscal year. Uh, actually tonight, the second item, um, we talked about 118 monies, uh, Commissioner going to approve, um, the channel improvements from 24th Street down to canal. So we'll, we'll move forward on that. Our preliminary court is actually already, already done on that. There's going to be some property acquisition that we, we believe. Uh, so this is moving forward now, the, the culverts behind the, this is trailer park. Um, we're waiting, we're waiting for a decision from the courts now, yes. So we don't have plans to move in, take out those culverts. We do get to go ahead, um, from, from the court. We're looking at, at a two day, two to three day process. So those, those will come out very quickly. Uh, above, above the, um, the culverts on Park, we're looking at a possible ditch basin. Uh, there have been paragons, uh, just, 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 or the full park, the, uh, there normally is, or possibly just down the paragons we have it. We, we know we need a tension, told we need a tension basin in that area. Uh, the site has not been, has, has not been selected yet. And that whole, obviously, um, property acquisition, uh, that was also, uh, actually that was in the, like, 109 portion that you, you approved, uh, dry canyon improvements, that's the dry canyon ditch. Um, so we do have, we do have funding that you, you all approved tonight, um, to, to get those improvements.
Okay. I just, I just want to make a, a point that it just seems like a very lengthy process that shouldn't take this long to, to get that done.
Mr. Rader?
Well, it is and as long as it is, it's, 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 I don't know, it's ridiculous, but, uh, it is. But the truth is now we got to, we're going to take it out and a really unhappy judge that would say, you know, they wouldn't find for us at that point. We'd be, we'd be guilty and charged if we.
It'd be, it'd be like, you know, you're leasing property out there, you had something on there you didn't want to afford and you wanted to just take it, haul it to the trash. You have the right to do that. I don't understand why we don't do that because we own these more than ditches.
And we, but we, we gave permission, he approved the land, so he's got some assessment in it and he's going to hire a worker now.
He's already hired one. It's just pointless that it will jeopardize 50 or 60 residents for one person. You know, so it's, you know, for big. Every, every time it rains, I mean, I, I drive a three quarter ton four wheel drive truck and I've seen that water over that area up to my doors and every time it rains, I get a phone call from all those guys over there because they happen to know my cell number and they just call me, you know, and, hey, when are you going to get these culverts out? And it's not just Jim Randall, it's all of them, you know? It just, you know, I don't understand why it takes so long.
I don't either.
But anyway, I just wanted to get, rattle everybody and see where we're at.
Okay. Commissioner Rader?
I have, uh, Brian, why are you standing there? Uh, street five, 218, had, had got by pretty quick there and I want to make sure that when we're looking at these and if we can bring back, talk to the, the, the walk, the Washington First Street realignment, I want to make sure we don't cut our part cap there when we go to, we're looking at.
Well, that's, um, that, that one did go through, did go through rather, rather quickly and we have a very narrow timeframe to expend the funds.
Okay.
Um, I understand, I'm concerned with, with Washington First Street alignment, we are moving forward, um, with the ground entry radar, looking at the other alignment, but what you, what you have, or you had in package tonight, that was approved, was the alignment of sort of your park, um, the ditch report. I talked about, if an alternate alignment is selected and we'll have to come back around, we'll have to come back to commission, uh, possibly for additional funding because the other alignment, I feel is going to be, going to be more expensive. Um, so that, that one project will be coming back, uh, coming back to commission.
Are you sure it comes back?
The other, the other projects that were approved, uh, I plan to move forward on, I'll move forward on, obviously all the projects.
Okay.
The only one that will come back to commission for additional approval would be Washington First Street because of that line.
Let's, let's do, let's do, let's do readdress that yearly development, Washington Park and 10th.
The other projects, since those were approved tonight, I will move forward with those so the commission will not see that again.
I've got, I've got one more for you too. I'd like to see, uh, readdress NASCAR scenic, uh, White Sands to Florida, i.e. that's a pretty good road compared to a lot of roads in Allenwood, I don't know.
Um, the reason of that one was selected, we're moving forward with that with the improvements on scenic, uh, from Indian Wells around to Florida. When that roadway was approved, uh, improved, uh, with the, two monies, I believe it was, uh, the scenic.
Bill Rishman, yeah.
Yep. Um, seeing increase, increase traffic, increase heavier traffic. Actually, I doubt presentations of those, were, were seeing that road go down and go down, uh, down fairly. Um, so we don't address it at this time. I'll be back before commission in the next couple of years and the price tag is only going to go up on that roadway. We're trying to catch it, catch it early. It was not, it was not built like our other major roadways in Allenwood, but the cable thickness is as much, as much less than if we would normally acquire a road, uh, carrying that, that type in the bottom of the track. So that's why that one.
Uh, I'm glad that, well, that would get it, it's a pretty good road.
There's sections.
I kind of agree with Robert on that one. I'd like that one to come back before us because that one just popped up all of a sudden on there and we've never talked about that road. And that road, what, maybe 25 years old? Maybe 30?
Uh, that roadway was in, uh, late seventies.
So 30, 30 years old. We've got some 50 and 60 year old road covered, for example. It hasn't been fixed in a number of years.
I don't, I don't disagree with you. What we're looking at, we're, we're traffic volumes and we're trying to, we're trying to catch this one before it becomes, you know, like the old sections.
I appreciate it. For a minute, I, I will attest that I, I frequent this, this intersection and it does have large traffic, um, industrial traffic. Hubbard Drive does not have industrial traffic.
If this is, if this is one that the commission wants to come back, then she probably bring, that, that is, that is a large portion of, of the, the, the streets we're looking at. So I'm pulling that one and I'll, I'll bring all those back to this package. With a, I'll, I'll alter to, to that one street, that's, that street is a concern. Except that is, that is going to change.
You know, there, there may be other traffic points we could do for $300,000 if we take traffic off of that. For instance, 25th Street, which comes immediately crying.
Well, I agree with the commission that more money should be designated to streets, a few more streets. I ate for one at the end of Florida, the former commission approved that, that not street, the, uh, street that the, uh, developer at that time did not have to do, as you know. And so the street is a, a bunch of patchwork and that's not listed here in streets as, uh, as, as much of other streets are not. And so if we can, um, as a commission, see a, um, preliminary budget where we can increase the amount of money designated to street projects, I think we can solve a lot of those issues. That would come, I don't know, city manager, that would come from our debt all fund or was that?
Well, I know we will bring it to you, preliminary budget, because we've not had the time to look where money is right now because we've got some downturnary grocery seed stacks and some other things. So we'll just have to wait till we get our budget kind of put together. And these projects are monies that are available now that we've got to get on real quick. This is part of the 700, $7 million project that we're going to do. If we're going to go forward with that, uh, we can pull, uh, another, we can take 842,000 out, but it's got to go on another street real quick so that we can get the package in. Uh, for instance, if we're going to do Texas Street or if he's going to do some other major street that would take the same amount of money, we can do it, but it's got to be real real quick because we've got to be table ready to go to bed because this money has got to be expended by the end of 14.
Can this money be used, uh, soon or, this money be used for purchasing property for other realignments such as, you know, Florida, which might be $800,000, Michael Wade?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We can.
Would you rather align Florida and not align, uh, Washington or align, align?
We both, we're talking about this 842,000, we could, we could do something towards that.
Mr. Caesar, if we can spend that 842,000 for maintenance on White Sands to Florida right there at North Seating, um, what will the cost be to completely rehabilitate it when it's gone?
It's already gone. You've got pulverized pavement, so it's, it's already, of course, Brian, it's already gone.
We're a little bit, it's pulverized and paving, but we're not going the next step and totally reworking, reworking, separating at this point. Over that cost is going to go over. The cost will go up. I can't, I can't get it at $100,000.
Would you, I should like to see this come back at the next agenda, um, maybe on the 25th?
If we like, can we move ahead with everything but that?
Yeah, just mainly that, that one road. I just had concerns, like I said, we've got lots of other roads that are far worse shaped than that one that, uh, almost feels should be addressed before we address it. Okay? That's just my feeling on it.
Are there any other members of the commission that would have remarks or inquiries at this time? If there are no other remarks or inquiries, I will attend to motion to adjourn. Thank you. I'm a motion maker, Mr. Rader, and for a second adjournment?
Second.
Thank you. A second by Mayor Tim Hernandez. All those who previously said aye? Aye, and he opposed nay. Thank you. We are adjourned.